Okay.
Do you need to back?
I just told him.
Okay.
I'm serious.
Them are socks. All right. Timestamp is exactly six thirty. Calling to order our city council meeting for September sixth, two thousand twenty-two. There's been a change made to the order for tonight in deference to the passing of our former mayor's wife. And that visitation going on, we are starting at six thirty tonight. We are dispensing with the briefing session. So that means we're dispensing with discussion of the rules of order, of rules of procedure. Excuse me until another meeting. Please submit your information, your comments, your changes to city manager in the meantime. Most likely, we will take that up at the next city council meeting. Our housekeeping for tonight is that we are going into immediate city council meeting at six thirty time mark. We're going to go through consent items. Then we're gonna go, we will do the consent items in this room. Then we'll go into executive session. We will conduct the executive session here. At the conclusion of executive session, we'll go into council chambers and conduct the rest of the meeting in council chambers. Okay? So for citizens and staff, I know that's a little, it's a big change, but I think it's in deference to Mayor Green and his passing of his wife. Mayor did well worthwhile. So thank you, staff and council, for accepting that change. I really do appreciate it. So, city manager, consent items, please.
Yes, sir. Item four A, consider minutes for the regular meetings on the second, eighth, ninth, ninth special meeting, fifteenth special meeting, sixteenth regular meeting, twenty-fifth special meeting, and thirtieth special meeting. Item four B, consider resolution.
We gotta raise.
Yes, you did. Ten percent, absolutely. Item four B, consider resolution approving a mosquito ground control agreement between Dallas County, Texas, on behalf of the Dallas County Health and Human Services Department and the City of Duncanville. The City of Duncanville has contracted with Dallas County for mosquito control services for a number of years. The scope of the services include ground application of adult sites and optional participation in aerial spraying to control the St. Louis, our West Nile virus. Upon notification by Dallas County of a positive trap, the city posted an alert on our website homepage and sends news blasts to most residents who've signed up for Everbridge, as well as for email updates and issues a press release. Signs are posted and maps are available in the sprayed area along the times when the spraying will occur. We are displaying these in the lobby areas in all buildings. Spray times are scheduled to start late in the evening and occur overnight, so that most residents will be in their homes and can secure their pets inside. The county rate for the mosquito control service is a hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour with a minimum of one hour of services assessed. The mosquito season begins in March, however, mosquito spraying for February twenty twenty-one started on August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, when the city trap started registering infected mosquitoes. The total budgeted amount for spraying is nineteen thousand fifty-five dollars.
Usually, when I have a question, I submit in advance as it's referred to. There, in times past, I remember some citizens asking the question about aerial spraying. Is that part of this contract?
Yes. Yes, it also includes some aerial spraying, but we do, it is, we also.
It's a last resort, I think.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Item four C, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of the household hazardous waste interlocal agreement between Dallas County and the City of Duncanville, Texas, to provide household hazardous waste services, including a disposal event and disposal services at the Dallas County Fixed Site Household Hazardous Waste Selection Location from October first, twenty twenty-two, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, for a cost not to exceed fifty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. The City of Duncanville has participated in the Dallas County Household Hazardous Waste Network since nineteen ninety-four, is one of sixteen member cities along with unincorporated Dallas County. A hazardous waste program aims to protect the water quality by eliminating household hazard waste from landfills and storm drains. For FY twenty-three, we are requesting fifty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars to cover the cost of the participation in the program, including the city's annual share of the HHW program, operational and capital budget. Set up costs and disposal fees for Duncanville's annual household waste event and other disposable services fees for residents' participation in the events held by the member cities and at least the Home Chemical Collection Center. Our most recent event was held on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two in the Duncanville Senior Center Parking Lot on James Collins Boulevard. And the event was a success. We had four hundred and eighty-four households participate, and about forty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety pounds of hazardous waste was collected. The collection event date for the upcoming fiscal year has not been determined, but we will be holding one in the spring of twenty twenty-three. Item four D, consider resolution approving the North Central Texas Housing Corporation assigning single-family mortgage revenue bond authority. The North Central Texas Housing Finance Corporation approved a resolution assigning its single-family mortgage revenue bond authority to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. This would then issue bonds for the purpose of financing home mortgage loans for the qualified first-time homeowners in the jurisdiction, including the city. Item four, yes.
The, let's see if I can go through the process of how these things normally happen. The chairman of the board of this organization usually sends an email to me with an indicator that they're looking to or seeking to go do some development, and they're seeking the funds to do that. And because Duncanville is part of this consortium, then it has to be approved. And their board comes to us for a signature. And if you recall correctly, we, as a council, elected Patrick Harvey to serve on that board. So one of the things when this happened, normally it caught my eye because of the dollar amount, fifty million dollars. Usually, it's much, much less than that. Usually, it's a hundred thousand here, a couple million there. So when I saw fifty million dollars, I kind of put a halt on this thing and said, we need to examine this to make sure that this is something we want to sign. Usually, it's a rubber stamp. But I asked the city manager and city attorney to examine this to make sure that this is a proper signature for this kind of a dollar amount. So that's why this is, as it is, I wanted to make a comment about it. Usually, it's, it's a pass-through, and we don't read too much considered. But this is a big dollar amount. I've never seen one this big before. I just wanted to interject that comment for council. Thank you.
Item four E, consider resolution approving a corporate purchase agreement with Well-Built Fund E through Byboard Contract Number five nine two dash nineteen for the purchase and installation of outdoor fitness equipment in the expenditure amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. At the April-June, at the June seventh, council meeting, the council directed staff to use our funding for outdoor fitness equipment at three parks, Armstrong, Redbird Park, and Lions Park. Staff contracted the open manufacturer representing Greenfield's Outdoor Fitness, the same equipment recently installed at Plybrook Park. We Built Fund from Allen, Texas, has provided a quote via Byboard, per se, par value of two hundred and forty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. This includes thirteen units at Armstrong Park and seven units at Redbird and Lions Park. Strength and cardio equipment will be spaced along the looped trail of each park, and consideration will be given to protecting any current and future development of the respective places and the historical area. After this purchase, a hundred thousand dollars, six hundred and eleven, hundred thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-one cents will be remaining for the project. Most recently, the council has asked that we include Quail Run Park to the three parks receiving equipment. Staff will work with the vendor to obtain additional quotes for the Quail Run Park, as well as determine how to best develop a looped trail within the park that would be linked to the exercise equipment. The added scope of service will utilize the remaining funds for the project budget.
So I'd like you to pass that move to the items ready to meet. Yes.
Item four F, consider resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the City of Duncanville and Dallas County to provide food establishment inspections within a minimum of two, one every year, months. The city has a health inspector on staff who performs health inspections on restaurants, daycare facilities, and Duncanville Independent Schools District Cafeteers and Food Trunks. This agreement will help the city provide emergency inspections in case of health inspections and absent. The City of Duncanville's food establishments are inspected twice a year by our city health inspector, however, rare cases that an emergency condition exists that require an inspection when our health inspector is on vacation or sick leave. Dallas County will provide a certified sanitation, sanitarian to perform the inspections and take appropriate staff. This is an area, I think, our council member, Mr. Contreras, actually helped us to set up having a health inspector, but it does allow us to do a lot of the work in-house. And so, but when she's on vacation and when we have more than one issue, Dallas County backs us up on this. A lot of cities only have Dallas County. Item four G, consider resolution authorizing approval of a paving and paint incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation to advance Alliance E during, doing business as advanced healthcare, acting by and through Kinsey Group, LCC, and is duly authorized, represented in the amount of ninety-two thousand for paving and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty for paint, not to exceed a hundred and one thousand seven hundred and fifty for building location at one eleven West Daniel Dell Road, Duncanville, Texas. Advance Alliance E doing business, as we mentioned, was approved by the DCEDC on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, for an incentive grant totaling a hundred and one thousand seven hundred and fifty for improvements to their businesses located at one eleven West Daniel Dell Road. Of the total funding approved, ninety-two thousand will be used for paving improvements to bring their property into compliance with the city's ordinance, while nine thousand seven hundred and fifty will be used to improve the exterior facade.
I just want to commend the DCEDC for approving this grant. If you looked at the pictures, if you're familiar with this building, it's been Ivo for a long, long time. And to have a company or an organization decide to utilize this property is, it's a wonderful thing for our city. So a commendation to the DCEDC for this dollar amount, to bring this building up to code and to give it a much, much better look for our city, because it's right on the gateway and right on Daniel Dell Road. So thank you very much, DCEDC.
And considering with that continuing of that effort, as the DCE is looking at investing more and more in our internal infrastructure that's existing, the next resolution for H, consider resolution authorizing approval of paving incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation to Loop Fish Singla and Singla Dental P L L C in the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred for a building located at five forty-one West Weon Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. The Dental Group was approved by the DCEDC on August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, for an incentive grant totaling forty-four thousand for improvements to their business. The funding will be used to improve the exterior pavement and the main thoroughway to allow for safer access to the city streets and for mobility around the business. The funding will also be used to create handicap parking to aid the patient's safety. Item four I, consider resolution authorizing the donation of an out-of-service fire truck to South Benzant County Volunteer Fire Department. The Duncanville Fire Department would like to donate an out-of-service fire engine to the South Benzant County Volunteer Fire Department. This fire engine has exceeded its twenty-year lifespan of our apparatus. Typically, these fire apparatus go to auction once their lifespan has been reached or receive a minimal interest and financing offer at the auction. So we are, they have expressed an interest in acquiring the engine to add to their fleet, and the City of Duncanville Fire Department would like to assist them in doing so.
Question, I wasn't clear reading the package, how we actually learned about them wanting the truck?
One of our ex-firefighters who worked for another city is also the chief out there in that location, and they're in dire need of a fire piece of equipment that they think that they can help rebuild and operate. So this truck has outdated our city, but it would probably be a nice piece of equip for them once they put some work. And they have engineers and mechanics that can bring that up to snuff.
I just wasn't sure, reading the package, how we came to know that they needed a truck. Yeah, so that's happened. Okay, very good. Okay. Actually, consent items? Very good. And we have noted that item four E is moving to items for consideration through the council members' groups. So city secretary, city manager helped me remember to do that when we get to that point. All right, ladies and gentlemen, with that, we are going to go into executive session. So I will go ahead and read that at this point, and then. The city council shall convene to close executive session pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero seventy-two Texas Government Code to liberate the sale, exchange, lease, or value of real property owned by the city south of Cleveland, east of Maine, and west of State Highway sixty-seven.
Who is Charles Williams?
How are you?
How are you?
I'm terrific.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our city council meeting for September the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Timestamp, but calling to order is nine-
Seven forty.
This says nine twenty-two.
Seven forty.
Okay, I will not go by this clock. I'm going by you, City Secretary, from this point forward.
All right.
Yeah, that's bedtime. Okay. All right. First thing that we have is an invocation, and this is by Reverend Dr. Ginger Hertz and Stein Conley of First Presbyterian Church. Please rise.
Mayor Gordon, council members, leaders, and citizens, please bow with me in prayer. God, I come to you tonight on behalf of these leaders who represent the people of Duncanville, leaders who tirelessly give of their time to offer vision for our city. As they consider what is necessary to accomplish their hopes and dreams, they cannot operate without the help of Duncanville citizens. Thus, tonight, we acknowledge that it takes vision for our leaders to run a strong, well-functioning city, so we ask you, God, for vision. It takes tireless giving of time and effort to achieve positive results. We ask you, God, to spur us all to tireless effort. It takes commitment and persistence to contribute what only each one can do. We ask you, God, to strengthen our resolve when the going gets tough. It takes respect for one another for us to make a cohesive contribution. We ask you, God, to help us complement each other's work so that the entire city benefits, for the sum of the parts is much greater than any part alone. God, our city is the environment these leaders are called to bring into flourishing, but we at times are pulled into opposition, disagreement, and conflict. Forgive us. Forgive us for inflaming our differences rather than looking for opportunities to build up community spirit. Press upon us the reality that we are not individuals looking out for our pet projects, but a foundationally, functionally diverse community that has been given much to build on. May we collectively own it. Let us be the city with the high call of faith in you and each other, hopes achieved and love experienced. Let this be Duncanville's moment to make a difference. As a minister of the good news, I pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in putting this to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of this world, for which it stands, a one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and respected by the Constitution of the United States of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Please be seated. I'm going to use my mayor's report more as an explanation of why we're doing business the way we are tonight in deference to the sudden passing of our former mayor's wife and Anne Green very suddenly, just a few days ago. And the viewing was tonight from eight, well, it's still ongoing, from five thirty to eight. So I did request that staff and council dispense with our normal briefing session to allow individuals to go to that viewing, and that's why we started tonight at six thirty. And we have dispensed with the briefing session, as shown on the agenda. That's why we went immediately into the council session, and we are then continuing on tonight with the council at this particular point in time. So thank you for your forbearance and understanding, and please keep David and his family in your thoughts and prayers at the passing of dear Anne. That's all I have from my mayor's report. Any city council members' reports? Mr. McNamara, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to echo the sentiments regarding Mayor Green and his family, but also our council member next to us, Joe Veracruz. He lost his sister-in-law, Joanne Daylon, this week as well, as well as former council member Ron Dotson's mom passed away. And then one other person, Leroy Fisher, he was an assistant principal at Duncanville High School when I was there, but he also, after he completed his education, retired from education, I should say, he also worked for the city for a while. So with that. So to spin it a little bit more, at least for something positive, I want to congratulate Don Johnson for making it for his eighty-fifth birthday. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'm going to rewind, and if you're congratulating people, I want to congratulate myself and my wife for fifty-two years of our anniversary last week. I'm sorry, you know, okay, you know, there are times when we're just flat a family. We really, we have diverse opinions, we disagree, but by golly, we know each other and regard each other with deep respect. Any other council members' reports? Seeing Dunn, City Manager's report.
Mayor and Council, given our delayed start, I will forego a report today.
Moving on to proclamations and presentations, item two A, recognition of Keep Duncan Beautiful, Fall of two thousand twenty-two curb appeal residential properties. Danny Johnson, Park Superintendent, presents the item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
City Manager, would you like to introduce this gentleman?
Yes, sir. It is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Danny Johnson. He has been with our organization for a short time, but long enough that he has now been promoted to be our Park Superintendent. He worked under Mr. Timothy Hamilton for a number of years, and he is the person that helps all of our city to glow with the beautiful flowers. And Mr. Johnson assumed this role and has been standing in since Mr. Hamilton has been gone, and so we're happy that he's going to continue in his role as Park Superintendent. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. So tonight, I'm here to provide you with the Fall twenty-two Curb Appeal Award winners for the city. Based on each district, District One is Thomas and Sandra Johnston. That property is located at nine oh six Green Hill Road. That'd be the property you see in front of you, board. District Two, David and Ruth Sutton, two one eight Meadowlark Lane. District Three, thank you, Alex and Angela Nichols at nine fifteen Eisenhower Drive. District Four, Deanna Green, two fourteen Blue Ridge Drive. And finally, District Five is Jesse Rodelio and Terry G at twelve oh three Hills City Drive. Those are the Fall twenty-two Curb Appeal Award winners.
Thank you for that, Mr. Johnson. Any individuals present tonight that you're aware of?
If you would, please come to the-
Please come forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Which house, which house? There we go.
Oh, okay. District five. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item two B, proclamation and recognition of nine eleven day of service and remembrance in Duncanville, two thousand twenty-two. Presentation and reading to be made by Councilmember Coontz. Mr. Coontz, please.
Proclamation of the city of Duncanville. Whereas twenty-one years ago, on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the American people endured the worst attack on U.S. soil in our nation's history with courage and heroism. And whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country united together across differences to stand together, to see each other's humanity, to grieve together, to take care of one another, and to do the hard work of rebuilding and uplifting our citizens, neighborhood by neighborhood. And whereas in two thousand and two, family members of those killed and injured on nine eleven joined with first responders and others to create nine eleven day as a way to annually and forever encourage all Americans to remember and pay tribute on the anniversary of the September eleventh, two thousand and one attacks through acts of service and volunteerism, and to keep Americans promised to never forget. And whereas the Serve America Act passed by Congress and enacted into law on April twenty-first, two thousand and nine, recognized September eleventh as an annual national day of service and remembrance, charged the Americor Agency with leading this nationwide effort. And whereas on the anniversary of the September eleventh attacks, it is fitting to pay tribute to the strength and resilience of the American people through service to our nation and our communities. And whereas by serving on this national day of service and remembrance, we honor those killed and injured, pay tribute to those who responded in service and compassion, and honor those who continue to serve our country, including active duty and reserve soldiers and their families, veterans and first responders. And whereas September eleventh National Day of Service and Remembrance commemorative activities are being organized by a variety of nonprofits, faith-based and community groups, public agencies, educational institutions, private businesses, and other organizations across the nation. To commemorate this day, communities across the nation will unite in service, responding to the ongoing effects of the COVID- nineteen pandemic, food insecurity, disaster recovery, and more. And whereas on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, and the days preceding and following this day, community members in Duncanville have the opportunity to honor the fallen and commemorate the continued American spirit of resilience through service. Stepping forward to serve in a remarkable spirit of unity, honor, and compassion, this year's September eleventh National Day of Service and Remembrance projects will help strengthen our communities while memorializing the events of that fateful day more than twenty years ago. And now, therefore, on behalf of Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim September eleventh as nine eleven day of service and remembrance in Duncanville. This is being presented to Danny Johnson, Park Superintendent.
Thank you. And I'm sure each of us can remember where we were on nine eleven and how it impacted us and our lives and our nation from that point forward. Thank you, Mr. Coontz. The next item, item two C, proclamation and recognition of Constitution Week, September seventeen through twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two. I will read that, and accepting is Bobby Hill. Bobby, before I read this, why don't you explain, look to the side just a little bit, this way. Why don't you explain to folk, why don't you explain to folks what we have here, or what you have? Here, now, now come over here.
Well, I'm a member of Alchism Trail Chapter, National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, and these pins represent offices that I've held, commemorative events, ancestors that we have proven, and just generally patriotic pins to remind us of occasions such as this. And we look forward to getting our Constitution proclamation and celebrate it one more time this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Proclamation, whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two marks the two hundred and thirty-fifth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, public law, nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the city of Duncanville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week in the city of Duncanville, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Bobby, thank you for all you do in your service to our city and to our nation for what you've done.
Thank you, Mayor Gordon. We appreciate this recognition.
One other note of housekeeping, we were notified in advance that Councilmember Patrick Harvey would not be here tonight, so you may know it is absence. Item number three, citizens' input. Pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero zero seven of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the- However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating any issues not on the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research in any future action. All persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations permitted by law. And policy of our city is that comments will be limited to two minutes, and I have written comments as well as individuals present who would like to speak. So I'm going to read the comments that I have, and then I will call upon the individuals who wish to speak presently. First item is from Joe Cole, four three four East Mona Avenue, Duncanville, seven five one three seven. Issue: Agendas for city meetings are released too close to meetings, which does not provide adequate time for citizens to digest and act upon the information contained in them. For example, the agenda for today's meeting was released sometime around noon on Friday, September second, leaving only about one point five business days in between the agenda's release and the meeting. The contents of these agendas frequently have large effects on the city, both in monetary terms and the impact on the daily lives of citizens. Citizens should have more time and opportunity to engage with these topics. Suggestion: Release agendas for sitting meetings at least five business days ahead of the meeting, so citizens can act upon the information contained in them, for example, provide their thoughts to the city council members, or prepare a comment for the meeting. Thank you. The next item submitted for reading is from Betty Taylor, four two two Oleander Street, Duncanville. Good evening, everyone. I would like to express my opposition to the former CVS building being leased or sold as a beauty supply. There's a beauty supply less than half a mile away that is much larger. Putting a smaller store will be less profitable to the community, which wouldn't help the city tax base overall. Please consider something that would bring our city a bigger profit. Thanks in advance. First item for an individual present, Tedra Williams. Um, seeing Ms. Williams is not present, we'll move on. Final item, Mr. Ken Bain. And please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Uh, Ken Bain, uh, nine thirty-eight Cambridge Drive. Uh, I was about ready to pull this, but after talking with a couple of people, I decided to go ahead and do it. Uh, I've got a couple of things I'd like to request of the council. Uh, one, uh, after researching and questioning many people, including council members, both current and past, I've concluded that the city council acting at the time the decision was made to modify the Daniel Dell Road repair work was misled. Uh, the specific repairs were voted for in the bond election by the citizens. I do not believe the resulting changes in reducing the lane, the road from to four lanes instead of six was the intent of the Duncanville, uh, voters. Staff also, uh, was, uh, was told not to include plans or pursue acquiring right-of-way to straighten the road to make it safer. My request is that the current council act to correct as much of this deviation from the original voter-approved plan by changing the current engineer plans back to the original road plans for the south side of Daniel Dell Road, thereby keeping it three lanes eastbound and discarding the bike-walking path on the south side of the road. The old original plans that were, when they originally built Daniel Dell should still be available, and they should be able to utilize those with some modification. I believe correcting as much as possible this previous deviation to the change that the citizens originally voted for will help the credibility of the council with the citizens. Uh, one other thing, uh, changed a little bit, but one thing that I had on here too, and I've talked a little bit about was, uh, with some staff people in regard to the, the outdoor fitness equipment. My recommendation is that you think about putting a cover over those equipment because of the heat and the birds, and it was mentioned that they were going to try to put them under trees. Uh, that doesn't really correct the situation if you want to have them utilized, in my mind. I, I don't know what their full plan is, and they may have taken everything into consideration, but they haven't. It would be something that I think could be in your interest to confirm, and I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number four on our agenda, which is a consent agenda, I will note that item four E has been requested by council member Koontz to be moved from the consent agenda to an item for individual consideration. City Secretary.
Item four A, consider the minutes for August second, city council regular meeting, August eighth, city council special meeting, August ninth, city council budget meeting, August ninth, city council special meeting, August fifteenth, city council special meeting, August sixteenth, city council regular meeting, August twenty-fifth, city council special meeting, August thirtieth, city council special meeting. Four B, consider a resolution approving a mosquito ground control agreement between Dallas County, Texas, on behalf of the Dallas County Health and Human Services Department in the city of Duncanville. Four C, consider a resolution approving the terms and conditions of the Household Hazardous Waste Interlocal Agreement between Dallas County and the city of Duncanville, Texas, to provide hazardous waste services, including a disposal event and disposal services at the Dallas County Fixed Site Household Hazardous Waste Collection located, location from October first, two thousand and twenty-two through September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for a cost not, not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Four D, consider a resolution approving the North Central Texas Housing Corporation assigning single-family mortgage revenue bond authority. Four F, consider a resolution approving the interlocal agreement between the city of Duncanville and Dallas County to provide food establishment inspections with a minimum of two, one every six months. Four G, consider a resolution authorizing approval of a paving and paint incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, D.C., D.C., to Advanced Alliance, Inc., doing business as Advanced Healthcare Acting by and through Kaiser Group, LLC, in its duty duly authorized representative in an amount of ninety-two thousand dollars for paving and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for paint, not to exceed one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for a building located at one 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 West Daniel Dell Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. Four H, consider a resolution authorizing approval of a paving, paving incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation, D.C., D.C., to Rupish Singla of Singla Dental, P.L.L.C., in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred for a building located at five four one West Wheatland Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one one six. Four I, consider a resolution authorizing the donation of an out-of-service fire truck to South Van Zant County Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you, City Secretary. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by council member McNabb, and second by council member Koontz. Council, please vote. Thank you. Unanimately approved. Absent Mr. Harvey. City manager, I believe probably at this time it's best to go ahead and address item four E uh, that was moved from the consent items to the items for individual consideration. City manager, who would present that, please?
Uh, Mr. Bart Taylor, Bart Taylor, I'm sorry.
Ms. Stevenson.
Bart Stevenson will come up and have a.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Um, yes, at the June seventh, uh, meeting, the council directed staff to move forward with using ARPA funds to provide outdoor fitness equipment for three different parks. Those parks mean Armstrong Park, uh, Redbird Park, and Lyons Park. Staff initiated this, uh, movement with, uh, contacting the provider for the outdoor fitness equipment at Pyburn Park. We want to stay consistent with the manufacturer, so we're using Greenfield Outdoor Equipment. Uh, we've retained a quote from them using a buy board, and, uh, we did a briefing at the council at your last meeting to talk about that. Uh, we went, did address, uh, a few things since that time, in that we will, uh, I want to make one clarification, I guess. The maps that were shown at the last meeting, uh, really were just to show the, the spacing ideas, not the exact location. So the staff will work with the manufacturer to, uh, pinpoint exactly where those, uh, units will go in the parks, uh, taking into consideration the topography, the trees, as well as the historical park here in Armstrong Park. And then I'd also add that we've, uh, again, at the direction of the council, we'll be adding an additional outdoor fitness equipment for Quail Run. They will address at a later time. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Uh, Mr. Koontz, since you asked for this to be brought forward, uh, what discussions do you have, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, so that the, the vendor's not with us this evening, I guess.
No, they're not here tonight.
Okay. Cause I, I did, uh, so I just want to say on this, and I do have some other comments, but, um, you know, as a, a, a health and wellness advocate, I've got some gut feelings about this and just some observations that I've made uh, and some time that I've spent in parks and just looking at, uh, this kind of equipment. So I, first of all, I just got a couple of questions, and then something else I want to look at. So from, from the quote, at the very bottom of the quote they gave us, it says that pricing may not be guaranteed beyond thirty days, and we got that quote on July twenty-sixth. And so, uh, and that quote was for two hundred and forty-nine thousand, right?
Correct.
Uh, so are we looking still at the same?
We are still, we can send them out. That has not changed.
Okay. And then, again, so, some of my questions just had to do with the, the particular units. So we've got seven units, uh, two of the parks, and then we've got ten that we're looking at.
Thirteen.
At, at Armstrong?
Thirteen for Armstrong, seven each for both Redbird and Lyons.
Okay, and that's, so twenty-seven, uh, units.
Twenty-seven, correct.
And, you know, tho- those, and my understanding is that they're different, uh, apparatuses, so some, I mean, you work different parts of the body, right?
Correct. There's a mix of cardio as well as strength training for all, um, levels of the bo- of the body.
Okay, a- and so on those, uh, on that equipment, how do you change the, the resistance on those?
Uh, you do not. It's all, the strength, uh, equipment is based upon body weight.
Okay.
So it's utilizing your own body weight to, for, uh.
So if you're, if you're losing weight, then the resistance, you have lighter resistance if you're losing.
It could be. You know, again, this equipment is not intended to, uh, create muscle man, I guess. Uh, truly intended to provide, you know, basic wellness, uh, to the community. Um, if someone wants to go, uh, further in their, uh, fitness efforts as far as strength training, we'd probably recommend the Recreation Center or one of our fitness centers here in town.
And then what, what does the, the, the maintenance look like on the equipment? So.
That's a good question. Maintenance is minimal, yeah.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I said, maintenance is minimal on these. In fact, I don't, Danny's here, I don't think we had any maintenance on the Pyburn Park, and that's been in there almost two years, so we've had, uh, really little to no maintenance at this point.
And are the mechanisms, is, are they chains or belts, or?
No, that, it gets all, um, what would you call that?
It's all mostly, uh, body-driven by pedals. So there are no belts or motors.
Okay. And, and so, uh, so the last time we were briefed on this, I, I'd asked about if there was any way that we could determine whether or not the equipment that's out there that we have in Pyburn, if we can determine how much is being used, if it's using, being used regularly, um, if it's being used correctly. I mean, do we have any information on that to know? Cause that's kind of a, a, a good test.
Yeah, I would say we do not have any information on that. Now, each piece of equipment does come with signage on how to properly use it, um, as well as, um, um, codes for, what's it called? The codes for the phones, the, take a pic, QR codes, thank you.
Yeah.
QR codes. They can get additional information through the internet by using the QR codes on each piece of equipment as well.
Okay. A- and then, uh, another question I had was, was there any kind of quantitative data that shows that the equipment is, uh, ha- has its intended benefit? And, and the reason I'm, I'm kind of asking all this is because a lot of the, the equipment that I've seen in the past, and again, this is just my, my experience, my observation, uh, d- doesn't necessarily serve the purpose that it has, and it ultimately, I mean, it's, it's a novelty, and, and people like to play on it. Um, and, and some people use it to a degree, but at some point, the novelty tends to wear off, and in the parks where I've seen it done, y- you rarely see people on it, a- and, um, you, you'll see kids playing on it, which is, I believe, a liability. Um, kids will see that equipment, and they'll just, you know, want to go run and play on it. Um, a- and so, are there any quanti- is there any quantitative data that, that's been shown that, that these machines actually do have their intended benefit?
I don't have an answer to that, and that'd be something probably for the manufacturer, uh, to answer, and I can get that information to you separately.
And, and just one more thing, Mayor, so, uh, and that's, when I asked last time, that was the, the kind of response that she gave, uh, was, there wasn't any real data to show that the equipment does have that effect, so I, so I looked it up, so I did some research, uh, just to see, yeah, I just wanted to look up if there are any articles that were written, um, and any research that had been done to really show, you know, quantitative data that this, the exercise equipment does have the actual physical health benefits. Uh, and so, you know, one article, you know, this is from the National Center of Biotech, Biotechnological Information, um, and there are multiple articles that I pulled up, but I knew I didn't have a lot of time. Um, so this, this says that, uh, and this was written in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, it says that the results revealed various usage behaviors, and so that, this is talking about just how people use the equipment. And it says that the results reveal various usage behaviors for the, the outdoor fitness equipment types. Uh, in addition, we observed that a significant portion of user behaviors did not follow manufacturer's instructions. So the instructions are on there, but a lot of times people don't use them, um, as they're intended, which might pose potential risks or actual, actually cause injuries. Children especially are prone to acting improperly. And then, uh, only in the past few decades have studies actually related to, uh, outdoor fit nor, outdoor fitness equipment directly address the benefits of using outdoor fitness equipment to individuals. And so, uh, there's a reason why there isn't a lot of data out there, because they haven't really done a lot of studies to show that it re- it's a real benefit. Uh, it says these studies have reported limited and mixed results, so the, the studies that have been done, uh, show limited and mixed results. It says the benefits of OFE, the outdoor fitness equipment, have not yet been fully explored, and adequate scientific results are not available to support the idea that OFE can provide benefits such as increased aerobic and muscular strength, strength or balance and flexibility. And then finally, and again, I'm just, um, taking excerpts from this, several studies have indicated that OFE poses many safety problems because of a lack of surveillance and inadequate, inadequate usage instructions. And for example, a study reported that seventy-nine percent of OFE users developed health problems after using the equipment, and that fifty-four percent complained of muscle pain after using the equipment.
Oh, Mr. Koontz, I'm going to interrupt just a moment.
Yes, sir.
City Secretary, how much more time does Mr. Koontz have? Cause we are limited by rules of procedure to ten minutes. You weren't keeping time.
I, I'm almost done.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Uh, in addition, several studies have reported that many OFE accidents or sports injuries occurred because users operated equipment incorrectly. And again, this is talking about them using it incorrectly, so. Uh, ma- major factors attributing to injuries were the malfunction of equipment and improper usage behavior. And so again, I, I just, I, I kind of had a gut feeling the last time, and I, when I was asking questions, and I just wanted to make sure that I backed that up with, uh, some kind of research, some kind of quantitative, uh, data. A- and I, I don't want to be completely uncompromising on this if, uh, it's, it's something that the rest of the council is really interested in. Uh, I, I, I would support it in, in each of the parks except for Armstrong Park. I'm not, uh, my gut feeling and just looking at what we're doing with Armstrong Park with the bond projects, uh, that we don't need something else going on outside there right now, uh, in addition to the fact that we'd like for people to use a rec center, and the weight room that they have there. So those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. McNabb.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a tendency to agree with Mr. Koontz on that, because the, the thing I always found was a little bit curious that is that we do have a recreation center, and we do want to encourage people to use a recreation center, and it has outstanding equipment. And it's, and it's indoors, and it's well-maintained and that line, so, um, I've, I've tossed this back and forth and, and sit there and think, is it, can we spend the money in a better way? And that's what my question, comment is. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would offer this for your consideration. We, as a city, decided that there are certain amenities that appeal to certain particular demographics and certain people within our city. And for that reason, we installed a complete bike lane loop within our entire city. I have never seen a single person using that bike lane in all the regions of every city that I've traveled, and I travel a lot around our city. So to say that there is no statistical quantitative data that could be applied to the use of this equipment in other cities, as we may apply it to our city, I would say to the contrary, we are adding amenities to our city to make our city more appealable. to make our city more appealable, more playable, more livable, and more attractive, especially to millennials who are more concerned with body health and weight. So, in that respect, in terms of statistical data, I'm not that concerned that we don't have any, because we don't have a single piece of data that says our bike lanes are used by any single person, and I know that there are some individuals right here in this room that are bike enthusiasts. But to that effect, no data exists to show that our bike lanes are used. But we, as a council, approve those bike lanes as a loop, because we felt it was a good amenity to add to our city. Uh, Ms. Cherry, and then Mr. Contreras.
So, as someone that is a member of the Recreation Center, I applaud having the choice to be inside or outside. Um, sometimes it gets where you don't, you're not comfortable inside because of the, you know, maybe a lot of people in there, and some people may have their mask on and may not have their mask on. It looks like they need to have their mask on, so to have the option. And like I said, I've, um, I go to Man- I've gone to Mansfield to a park where they had the outside. So, I appreciate having the choice.
Mr. Contreras.
Um, first off, I agree with, uh, Ms. Cherry's remarks about, um, using these, uh, outdoor facilities, um, just by, by choice. If someone wants to go in and use the indoor equipment, because it's more specific to specific types of benefits from using that, this is something that I have seen people, uh, at, not, not necessarily where we have them in Pyburn Park, cause I don't live over that way, but I've been in other parks for, uh, different events, where I've seen people going around reading the instructions and using the equipment. I haven't done the research that Mr. Coons has done. Uh, I would ask the question, uh, were, were there any positive? Uh, it seemed like you quoted a number of negative, um, uh, studies. Were there any positives about the benefits?
Uh, before I ask to go, go back to Mr. Coons, sorry, are you asking him the question directly?
Yes.
Mr. Coons, Mr. Coons.
Yes, sir. Th- thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, the, the idea of it, there are a lot of positives, positive statements about the idea of, of the equipment. But again, th- just looking at the data, it doesn't show that, um, that there's an actual benefit, um, cardiovascular-wise and, and muscle tone-wise. Um, can I add any other comments to that? Before?
Well, I think Mr. Contreras has a valid comment that there's two sides to every story, and if you only brought to us the negatives, then just the council also needs to hear some positives, and you have not provided any of the positives to us as well.
Can I resp- can I respond?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so my point is that when I looked at the studies, it didn't show any positives in the data. That, that's my point. Um, a- and I, I will say again that i- if, if we're looking to approve this tonight, and I guess we are, that, that I, i- if there, if there was something I would support, I would support it in Lyons Park or some of the other parks, not, uh, particularly at Armstrong Park. So, I'm not saying that, uh, that we shouldn't have it anywhere. But, a- and the comparison of, of this to riding a bicycle, I believe, is a inaccurate comparison, because we know the benefits of riding a bicycle.
It's the, this is, it's the statistical data, Mr. Coons, that you were bringing up in terms of no usage. And I'm saying we have no statistical data of usage of our bike lanes either. I'm not talking about the benefits of riding a bike. I'm talking about statistical data which you focused on so very heavily.
Okay.
So, I'll bring this discussion to a conclusion.
Mayor.
Mr. Contreras, yes, sir?
I wasn't done. I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. Uh, and I want to state for the record that I, I always appreciate, uh, council members that, that do research. So, uh, uh, same holds true with the research that you've done. I appreciate the information you've gathered for us. Uh, the other thing I want to comment on, though, is that, um, uh, Redbird Park in the district that I represent, um, doesn't have the amenities that some of the other parks have. Um, that's no one's fault. Um, I'm not upset about it, but if I can get amenities, given the, um, uh, what I discovered as I, as I, um, uh, canvassed neighborhoods, um, a year ago, was that we do have a significant number of seniors, and they do use that park to walk around that track. And I think these types of devices may be something that's low-impact enough that they may benefit from them. So, uh, given that, that some of the other parks have more amenities, um, I'll, I'll be in favor for that reason for approving this tonight. Thank you.
Concluding the discussion, the chair will entertain a motion. We have a motion to approve by Mr. Contreras. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. Motion is passed. Thank you. Uh, council members, if you're done speaking, would you please click off your lights? Thank you. Moving on to item five A, consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances by adding new chapter twelve E, Special Events. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation, again. Um, as council is aware, uh, staff has had an initiative to review all of our existing ordinances and processes associated with each for quite some time now, and the special event ordinance in particular was once found in the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance, the CZO chapter of the Code of Ordinances. When the new CZO was adopted last year, uh, the special events was not included in that update, primarily because special events really aren't tied to land use. And so, it was determined that that needed to be pulled out and created a separate section in the regular, in the other portion of the Code of Ordinances. So, staff has worked on putting together the new special event ordinance. Really, it's the same as the previous special event ordinance, um, that outlines the regulations and the processes by which people use to get a special event permit. There were some minor changes made to the ordinance. It created the Special Event Permit Coordinator, which kind of creates a staff person who's directly responsible for administering the process with applicants. It also reduced the threshold of the permit requirements from two hundred and fifty people to seventy-five people. We saw a lot of issues, uh, with the previous ordinance where, uh, some rather large events that did not require a permit, just because they didn't have up to two, they didn't have more than two hundred and fifty people. That seemed a little bit excessive to staff, so we've reduced that to seventy-five. And then also, we took the opportunity to lengthen the time necessary by requiring them to submit their applications, uh, thirty working days in advance, as opposed to fourteen. So, with that, I'll answer any questions you have about, uh, re-establishing the Special Event Ordinance, uh, chapter, I think it's twelve E, into the Code of Ordinances.
Mr. Contreras.
Just, uh, give us an idea. How many, uh, do I have?
Thank you. In the past, how many, um, special event permits did we issue per year, roughly?
Oh, I'd say roughly twenty-five to thirty.
Okay. And second question, last question, is, um, in this process, um, I read through this quickly. I, I didn't read through it to see what changes were made, so I appreciate your clarification. But, um, this still goes through an approval process which includes different department heads having to sign off on it?
It does. We have a committee that meets as needed, uh, for the, especially for the larger events. We actually bring in the applicants themselves, so then to, so them can, uh, answer any questions the committee might have about their event, uh, to work closely with each particular group. It'll be the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works. Uh, we have representatives from all the departments at those, at those meetings. Uh, so we can kind of be a one-stop shop for the applicant, uh, making it an easy process for them to get their permit. Um, and then, uh, once those questions are answered, uh, the committee, uh, makes any finalizations, requirements. We put those in writing and provide those to the permit requester in writing as a form of the permit.
Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson, I, this question is more of a semantical nature, I guess. You just mentioned committee.
Mm-hmm.
I read through the entire document two or three times, looking for where it defined the, I guess, putting together a committee. And I did find the word committee, but I didn't find where that committee was put together and why the committee was put together. Sorry?
Page two at the very top. I think it says committee.
Page two?
Under definitions. Should see committee.
Why? But, understand the definition, but why is there a committee necessary for this purpose?
Again, it's a, it's a, the, the reason for the committee is that we want to bring in representatives from all the departments, the Health Department, the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works. Everyone who's involved with any special event or could be involved with those special events are brought into one room with the applicant, uh, to go through the application, uh, ask questions, get those answers, explain to the applicants what the rules and regulations are for those particular departments. Cause every department has their own little idiosyncrasies as to how they handle these, uh, specific events. And so, as an example, the Fire Department requires spacing amongst tents. They require fire extinguishers for food being cooked. Our Health Department has to do inspections. Our Health Department and the Fire Department has to inspect all the food trucks. Uh, we have lots of regulations. We work with our Public Works Department as far as needing the barricades, uh, cones when we do the five K races, the, the parades, uh, all those types of things. So, um, every department is invol- is involved.
So, is the committee assembled for every single special event permit?
No, mainly the big events that require multiple departments, as well as any new events.
Okay.
We have a lot of repeat customers that come back every year that we don't have to actually meet in person. We've gotten to a point now with, with COVID, we're all meeting online now, right? So, we started doing that, a lot of it, uh, virtually, uh, as well, especially those repeat, uh, customers who come back every year with the same event and, and do not make any changes. Uh, we go through their, uh, they go through their applications fairly quickly to not to take up anyone's, uh, additional time.
Very good. Okay. Mr. McNerney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Stevenson, with the numbers changing, h- h- how many more would you, events do you anticipate?
That's probably a good question. I would say no more than half a dozen, six, eight maybe at most. Uh, there's very few events that, uh, that fell into that category. Um, however, uh, staff really felt like it was imperative that we address, uh, any of those events that were seventy-five people or more, because it could potentially be an issue for, uh, the community.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments by City Council, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Contreras and a second by Councilmember McNerney. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Item five B, consider a resolution approving a special event alcohol permit to Holy Spirit Catholic Parish, one-one-one-one, West Daniel Dale Road, as provided in Exhibit A, providing for possession, distribution, and consumption of beer and wine. At such special event in accordance with Section twelve-point-two-zero-five of the Code of Ordinances, providing for regulations and conditions for such use, providing for a waiver of applicable distance requirements under Section twelve-dash-two-zero-one of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when that will be put together, this, to put the special event orders back into, uh, the Code of Ordinances, we do have our special, first special event application that will deal with alcohol in quite some time. I think the last time we came before you to talk about a special event alcohol permit was Barbecue in Blues a number of years ago. So, it's been a while. But, uh, the Holy Spirit Catholic Church, this is, again, as I just mentioned, we have a lot of, uh, repeat events, and this is one of those in our community. Um, the Catholic Church here at one-eleven, Daniel Dale, has, uh, submitted their application for an alcohol permit. They've, uh, done the Fall Festival, the annual Fall Festival for thirty-plus years, and, uh, this year, they want to provide the opportunity to, for the sale and consumption of, of beer and wine. And so, that does require a little something special. In addition to the special event permit, it requires the approval of the council, but, for an alcohol permit. So, that's why we're here tonight.
Very well. Thank you. Any discussion by council? Seeing done, Chair will entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember McNerney and a second by Councilmember Vera Cruz. Council, please vote. Approved by five to two. Mr. Coons to sit, uh, not approving, and Mr. Harvey Abson. Moving on to item five C, take any necessary action as a, as a result of executive session. There is no action to be taken as a result of the executive session. Moving on to item number six, Staff and Board Reports. Receive the Public Works Department Quarterly Report. Interim Public Works Director, Jackie Colton.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor Gordon, distinguished members of the Duncanville City Council, City Manager, City Secretary, and City Attorney, I am Jackie Colton, the Interim Director of the Public Works Department, and I am here to share with you today, uh, third quarter highlights. I would like to mention that joining me here tonight are three members of our staff. We have, um, Matt Bryant, who is our Utility Superintendent. We have Kelly Machesney, who is our Street Superintendent, and then we have Brianna Davis, who is our Executive Assistant. Oh, how could I men- how could I omit Mr. David Dunn, who is our Assistant Utilities Superintendent, responsible for sanitation? Okay, so, what drives Public Works Department? Well, our mission is to provide responsive, quality customer service to the citizens and businesses, and also staff within our city. So, that is our intent and desire, both collectively and individually. So, we take pride in our jobs. We have some of the most, uh, qualified and capable, uh, craftsmen, um, engineers. You, you mentioned it. We've got all, all kind of qualified people whose, you know, sole desire is to do a good job, you know, and to take care of our citizens. So, that's kind of what makes us tick. So, our operations are divided into nine core areas. That's Facilities Maintenance, Fleet, Traffic Operations, Streets, Water, and Wastewater Utilities, Sanitation, Engineering, and Drainage. Okay, this is our org chart, and it, uh, basically shows while we have nine, uh, functional core areas, we are divided into six divisional areas with Water, Wastewater, and Sanitation being combined under Mr. Bryant, and, and then Drainage being, uh, combined under Kelly. So, we're some sixty-two positions strong. Currently, well, as of the third quarter, we had ten vacancies. Unfortunately, we have lost, uh, additional, uh, employees to other, um, businesses and/or municipalities. So, this is kind of, you know, how, uh, we're, uh, how many employees we have per division, and the number of vacancies that we have, uh, in each area. Okay, so Facilities Maintenance, it is a recent, um, addition to the Public Works Department. They are responsible for maintaining all the city's facilities, from City Hall where we are today, to the library, to the fire stations, to the Eon Building, and they also provide custodial services as a part of their purview. So, they had, um, several actually building maintenance, um, projects that they undertook the third quarter. One of them being the replacement of the sewer lateral at the Eon Building. And actually, it was contracted work, but they oversaw and managed the contract. And then we've had multiple, uh, AC, uh, equipment that we've had to replace, and, uh, we've had other plumbing issues. So, as, you know, our facilities age, we are called to, you know, pour more and more, uh, money into them in order to keep them functioning. Okay, so, these are our, um, operational readiness goals and, uh, scores for our equipment services. They maintain all of our city vehicles and keep us all rolling. So, they've had a bit of a challenge here previously with the public safety vehicles, uh, primarily due to accidents. But, one of the things that we're finding is that... But, one of the things that we're finding is that we're able to get equipment or vehicles repaired quicker now. You know, we're not all the way through the supply chain shortage issues and all of that, but it is getting better, and I'm happy to report all of our fire trucks are in operation currently, and also our patrol vehicles. Okay, so, traffic and signal operations, they met every goal set for them with the exception of the ground-mounted signs, and that was due to the fact that the cost for the signs increased. So, we had a set budget and we were not able to, you know, increase the budget, but for twenty-three going forward, we have increased that budget. So, their goals are very important in that the more preventive maintenance and everything that we do makes for a reliable traffic control system which feeds into public safety. So, we appreciate the work that they do as well. Okay, so, street and drainage maintenance. There are currently nine vacancies in this particular group, but they were able to patch thirty-one potholes within forty-eight hours of receiving the notice to patch them, and then they inspect the drainage inlets and the bridge head walls. They were able to accomplish those tasks within their goals. One of the things we struggled with was actually getting concrete, and it was not only an issue for Duncanville, but for other cities and contractors around us, and that has also improved. But, that did impact our ability to affect utility cut repairs within ten working days. But, you know, there are, we foresee that as improving, and we're looking at also, you know, additional things we can do like bringing onboard additional vendors so that there is more variety there. Okay, so, we have a concrete crew, and they have completed sidewalk repairs in seventy-nine locations in the Marybrook Park subdivision, and they've installed forty-five ADA ramps. They only have nine ADA ramps to complete in this particular subdivision. And I know, you know, this is very important to, you know, promoting walkability and more of a community feel. So, we, council, you know, designated funds for a concrete crew, and this is the result of, of that effort. So, our next stop is Wheatland. There are a number of ADA improvements that we will be making on Wheatland, and then also repairing broken sidewalks. Okay, utility operations, they're the guys that make sure that when we turn that tap on, that we get good, clean, wholesome water at a sufficient pressure, and that we don't, we, you know, we, we have what we need. So, in looking at the third quarter of this year compared to the third quarter of last year, we pumped over eighty million gallons of water, more water this period than we did last year, and that was primarily due to the fact that it was very hot and dry. Okay, and then, so, we have our water loss gallons percentage, which our goal is less than ten percent, and we're well under that goal. And then, with our valve exercise, because we do have vacancies in that area, we're under our goal. Okay, so, this slide gives additional information on our water loss breakdown, like what's in that number. So, we're required by the TCEQ to do dead-end flushing in order to, you know, ensure water quality. So, the greatest percentage, eighty-two percent, or over five million gallons of the water that we use for the third quarter was, you know, so that we could flush our, our dead-end mains. And then we had another small percentage, fourteen percent, or about eight hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water loss due to main breaks. Okay, it, it's amazing, you know, the work that all of our crews do. This is kind of one instance of work recently performed. There was a six-inch area wastewater main that because of the storm was ruptured, and our crews figured out a way to go in and fix it. So, hats off to them for that. And if they had not been able to do that, we would have had to pay for bypass pumping and, but they're, they're amazing, our, our team. So, okay, so sanitation, we want to invite all to come out to our Fall Operation Clean Duncanville. It's going to be conducted on the eighth of October, and you'll be able to bring, you know, documents for shredding as well as bulk items, even though, you know, we pick that up twice a month. But, if you, you know, want to bring it out and just get it out in the hairy, you can bring it to the service, to that event on October eighth. Okay, so, this is our major capital improvement project that we have going now, which is Daniel Dale, and it is anticipated to be complete by January of 2023. So, this includes Public Works' third quarter report. Do you all have any questions, and thank you for your attention?
Thank you, Ms. Colton, Mr. Contreras.
On, Ms. Colton, on slide sixty-eight, just got a quick question.
Let me see.
Yeah, I think, I think Mr. Keese is running it. You're not.
Well, that's, that's okay.
Oh.
There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Actually, it's one more back. There you go, sixty-seven. Thank you. On the water loss breakdown, when we talk about these dead-end lines which make, make up the most of that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Has there ever been a citywide feasibility study to look at our dead-end lines to see if in fact they could be tied into loop systems?
Yes, sir. Actually, what we're doing as we're undertaking capital improvement projects, we're making sure that we tie in those dead-end lines.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mayor. Could, could you speak a little bit to the Daniel Dale and Main Bond Project and, and whether or not we're, we're on course to complete the, the design, the plans that were voted on, if there's been any deviation from that?
Okay. So... Okay, so, I can say that there have been no deviations from the design that was presented to City Council and that was approved.
And that would answer my question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. And would you be able to just kind of give us a brief review of what that plan was?
Oh, okay. So, it is a, we're, the, the plan is to provide a twelve-foot walking trail on the north side with two, with a parkway and two lanes, and then on the south side, an eight-foot, eight-foot sidewalk with two lanes with landscape improvements and a monument.
And, and that's, that's what the council approved at that, that time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council. Seeing no more questions, thank you, Ms. Colton. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And kudos again to our street maintenance workers. They're doing a fine job despite the vacancies. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 6B, receive the Neighborhood Services Quality Report. Mr. Tennant?
Uh, Mayor Council, Jeremy Tennant, Planning and Neighborhood Services. First off, I'd like to say that we were almost there. We almost had a full team, but unfortunately, we lost a very vital member of our team. But, we still have a good team. This is a picture of us all together. I promised you guys that last time, but we were fortunate enough to get one for this upcoming time for you all today. And Mr. Nathan Warren, who is also here, is our senior planner of our planning tech, which is Lynette Romero. We've got our, everybody on our Neighborhood Services team except for a billing inspector, which is currently vacant, which we're actively trying to pursue and look for that billing inspector. Just haven't made that closure just as of yet, but we're still looking, actively searching. And then, of course, our Neighborhood Services, almost had one per each area darn near, but it's currently we have a vacancy, and that is actually out there on the, on interwebs as well, and we're soliciting for that position also. Oh, excuse me, how did I fail to get? We also have a health inspector as well, and I also want to take this time to say thank you because tonight you guys approved the interlocal Dallas County. So, any, the absence of Mrs. Island whenever she's out and about or on vacation, whatever have you, we still have coverage for the city for health inspection. So, I want to take this moment to say thank you all for that vote today, this evening.
Mr. Tennant will interrupt.
Sure, sir.
There, I had a discussion with a local entrepreneur owning a restaurant, and he was very, very appreciative of Tammy Island in the manner in which she did her inspections, open, transparent, pointed out things, very, very accommodating, very professional.
I will pass that along to her through this video this evening. Thank you, sir.
Commend her for that, please.
Yes, sir, thank you. And service areas, referring to our Neighborhood Service Officers. One of the things that we're trying to do is basically have a Neighborhood Service Officer per each area. Ironically, there is a caveat, we have a CDBG, as you all recall, a couple of months ago, you guys approved a CDBG. We have one of our Neighborhood Service Officers, which is funded primarily to CDBG. We've actually worked with the county, discussed with the county, a way of dividing and conquering, if you will, kind of parsing out, if you will, Neighborhood Service Officers within the CDBG, but the best practice that we come to find out, especially as it relates to reporting, because there is a monthly reporting structure that has to be done with the county, that is unfortunately not something that we could manipulate in that regard. So, as such, we have one Neighborhood Service Officer that's responsible for all the entirety of the CDBG, and that is, of course, as I mentioned last time, Mr. Terrence Bass. As you look at, that's the, the yellow section that basically crosses a number of your districts. So, again, this will be one of the Neighborhood Service Officers that will be in all of the majority of the council districts. And then we have the green section, the, the yellow section, which I kind of will break down later on inside the slide as well. And again, looking at parcels because again, don't want to overwork, overburden anybody because again, we want to make sure that we have eyes on the street and also contact out there in all places. There is a combination of three and five for Neighborhood Service Officer. As you see, it kind of somewhat breaks those parcels up somewhat equitably, but not entirely, but just so that we can quote-unquote "share the workload" with all of our staff as it relates to our Neighborhood Service Officers. And this is the breakdown that I mentioned earlier, where we actually do have the council district, and the CDC is council district, and the number is like four, one, two, three, four, and five, so that way we all have the same dynamic as it refers to the labeling, where we have four, which we, by one Neighborhood Service Officer, CDBG by another, CDC one, which is Council District one, two, and then that three and five, which is currently vacant as it stands right now, which of course, at one time, we had the full roster for, but we currently have a vacancy for at this particular juncture in time. But, that will actually currently be shared with our senior as, as it stands currently, and that's the dynamic that we have moving forward logistically until that position is filled. And then, of course, we go into the code cases as well, where we had a total number of inspections, just to kind of run through this unless there's something specifically that you have any questions about, roughly two-hundred-and-fifty-one total cases. And of course, we have all the specifics such as construction of an illegal permit, all the way down to dead trees of vegetation, all the way to illegal signage, which of course is a collateral, it's a collaboration between the Neighborhood Service Officers and building inspections as well. A number of these are, where we have a total of like six-hundred-and-forty-five inspections, and we've received compliance for a good percentage of those, as you see there, roughly two-hundred-and-twenty-five. Yes, sir.
Interrupt just a moment. Mr. Coons, you had a comment, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you. I, I just had a question about under nuisance violations, and where it says junked vehicle street, is that, I guess, I was just wondering is, do the police typically deal with junked vehicles in the street, and y'all deal with the ones that are on properties?
That is accurate, yes, sir. But, we doc, we document it in our MYGOS system, so it's just something that's documented in the MYGOS system, which carries on into our, our monthly report.
Okay, thank you.
Because we do get calls on those as well, so we just document it accordingly. Any additional questions? All right. Moving right along to our Community Development Blog Grant, where we have a number of cases, and again, this is the CDBG, which stretches a lot, a large portion of the districts within the city of Duncanville. And again, our health inspections, we have roughly nine-hundred-and-sixteen health inspections that have been done by Miss Island, excuse me, billing, billing inspections, billing inspections, which are done by Mr. Randy Goucher, and also Bureau Veritas. So, we have nine-hundred-and-sixteen inspections of those, and our health inspections, which are done by Miss Island, one-hundred-and-ninety-three. And basically, the total number of contacts that we have on total as well, our special use permits, excuse me, regarding planning, we've had nine so far this quarter, four we've placed and two planned developments. And again, our quarterly accomplishments, we have hired our senior planners, I mentioned before, we have our two Neighborhood Service Officers, which have fit in really well, Mr. Marquise Thomas and Mr. Jose Ernest Lanas, preferably referred to as Ernest, which have got, hit the street running. They've been very, very eager and helpful to the citizens out there. Hopefully, you guys hear great things about them, as you've heard about one of our previous employees earlier today, because they're, they're looking forward to carrying that banner forward. We're currently reviewing, as I mentioned before, candidates for the building inspector vacancy, and we have, thanks to IT, configured our body cameras, and they were being active. Unfortunately, one of our Neighborhood Service Officers left, he was also the one that was also trained appropriately as well, so we're trying to, because he was our IT aspect of the group as well, so we're looking through that process as well. And also, at this time, I'll take the juncture to also, as they say, give a shout out, a shout out to our fire department because they were very kind and helped us. There is, one of the things that we come to find out as it relates to health inspections is there are a number of entities inside of the city that like to bring food trucks up late at night for some of our afternoon, after our evening events, if you will. We actually had our health inspector come out at nine o'clock to ensure that this was not a case. Unfortunately, she has a bedtime that she has to meet, but the good thing about it, she was able to pass the baton to Mr. Wakeland on our fire, on our fire marshal on the fireside, and he stayed out there and was able to relay the message to said entity to inform them that we need to have you go through the process because we have a mobile food vendor unit, and because of our contacts with the businesses in certain areas of the city, they've actually commun, they've actually begun communicating with us so that way we can do our due diligence to inform those entities that they have to perform, have to follow the guidelines. So, I just want to basically give a special thank out to our fire department, also our fire marshal in regard as well, and also police because we're also going about, as you all know, in certain areas of the city, we have people that are parking on improved surfaces, primarily the right-of-ways with their vehicles. Police have been working with Neighborhood Services so that way we could basically address those issues as well, so we can educate individuals on what the rules are and what the rules are not. So, just want to give a shout out to those teams as well. Of course, we also are doing a comprehensive plan update. We're actually having, we've actually received the Wheatland Plaza PD, which is coming through on the system right now. We have, we have received that application. It should be coming through here, re, pretty soon. We are finalizing the update for the certificate of occupancy process, and pretty soon with the exposure of the new website coming out, C Click Fix, which will be a very good useful tool, which has been brought to your attention before, will allow the citizens to be able to identify and see the progress on certain complaints that they make throughout the city, so that way they're aware of the status updates as we go throughout the process of looking at those and touching those particular entities.
One moment. Dan, Mr. McNamara, you had a question or comment, sir? Thank you. Hey, Mr. Tennant, can you talk a little bit about the update for the getting a CO, the process?
Sure. Staff has looked at our process and identified that we have had some shortcomings inside of it. So, as of that, we've put our heads together, we've talked about it, we've, we created a new process and format, and again, a new application has soared with that as well. So, we're looking at it from the standpoint of not how it was previously, where it went before building inspections primarily, but is that... but is actually going before zoning. Because one of the aspects is, if you're not properly zoned, that should be where the road stops. Unfortunately, we've had people go throughout the process just to find out that they were not properly zoned for what it is they were trying to do. So this is an entity where we're trying to work with our business community to inform them, to communicate with us, so that way they're aware of the use that they're soliciting to come into their site to identify whether or not it is actually applicable with our CZO. And so that's one of the things that we're doing to basically kind of work with our, with our community, our business community, so that way they understand the partnership that we, and the importance of what both parties have as we bring it to the table. Any other further questions, sir? Thank you, sir.
City manager, on that particular line of comment, is there not some initiative underway to bring together what's being called, I guess, a roundup of developers to look at our CO process?
Yes, as well as looking at software. One of the items, and I think we mentioned it, it was part of our budget process too, is that I'd like to see the process automated. It's a very paper-oriented application, which people have to figure out what they need, why they need it. And so not only working with our developers to talk about the process and what works and what don't work, but also to have something where you can do this online. My assistant city manager has even been looking at kiosk so that for those who do not have computers at home, they can come in and use the kiosk to do certain applications to make it easier for our customers.
Thank you very much. Mr. Tennant, thank you.
Thank you.
And positive to your entire crew. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Seeing no more comments by city council, this concludes our business for this evening. Therefore, we adjourned at 8:59. Thank you very much.
What the researchers in Montana have done is that they've actually put barbed wire on these natural rub objects, so when bears rub on them, they can collect genetic material through the hair, through the hair follicle, for DNA testing.
Back in the forests of East Texas, Dan's team continues to check the snare sites. And they're finding some hair.
How's it look?
I think this one's a hog looking at the medulla.
Dan has hundreds of samples to analyze.
Based on the cuticular structure, the scaling on the hair, I can use this dichotomous key to help identify if we have a raccoon or a hog or even a bear hair sample here.
Is hog what you see mostly?
It's Ben primarily, hog and raccoon.
Intense logging of bottomland hardwood forests in the late 1800s wiped out most of the black bear habitat in Texas.
There has been a great loss. And reclamation is a mechanism to regain what we once had.
J.W. Smith lives up along the Texas-Oklahoma border and has seen black bears on his property.
And the pecan crops, what brought the bear in here?
Yeah, I would assume.
He's working with Texas Parks and Wildlife to restore some of the savannas and bottomland hardwood forest habitat that used to be here.
Eastern red cedar, though it's native, it's really taken over. So in order to restore that diverse forest savanna that should be here, first of all, you have to remove those cedars so that those other things can return. So you basically go from 500 or 600 acres of poor habitat to a quality habitat.
Yeah, it's a fantastic habitat. Yeah, this recovers and does well.
We're right now in Pecan Bayou in northeast Texas. Pecan Bayou runs parallel to the Red River, and it's a high-quality habitat corridor. So any habitat work being done adjacent to this provides connectivity for these bears to move through these corridors.
Maybe we can set it as an example. I guess I really am glad to see that the bears are coming back. And I hope that what we do in conservation and habitat restoration will help that.
It's been three years now, and Dan's team has covered thousands and thousands of acres.
The most important part right now is just making